Order at 3:05. Maybe have a roll call, please.
Council members, Agajanian.
Present.
Devine.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Sinanian.
Here.
Mayor Garpetian. Here. May I please have your report?
The Jennifer, the May 9, 2017 Special Public Meeting of the City Council is posted on Friday, May 5, 2017, on the Bulletin Board outside City Hall.
Okay, and what's next?
Next item is Director of Community Development regarding 145 North Louis Street, Stage 1 Design Review. 1A is a motion approving Stage 1 Design.
So, Chuck?
Actually, sir, with your indulgence, what we would ask you to do is to go with the Estelano-Lasar Perez Advisors Agreement, that's a shorter report, and then move to the other, if that's okay?
Of course.
Item 2 is Director of Community Development regarding implementation of the Glendale Tech Strategy. 2A is a City Council motion authorizing to enter into professional services agreement with Estelano-Lasar Perez Advisors in an amount not to exceed $75,000.
Okay.
Good afternoon, noon, Mayor Garpetian and members of the City Council. Today, I will be presenting to you a very brief update on the progress of the Glendale Tech Strategy, and will be requesting authorization to enter into a contract with ELP Advisors for the implementation of that plan. So, as you know, this strategy has been two years in the making, and has now become a very essential component of what we do in economic development. And when we talk about our priorities, and why it's important to cultivate this tech ecosystem, there are really three good reasons why the tech initiative works for Glendale. First is that there's a high growth rate of jobs in this industry. Second, the high wages that are associated with these jobs are very important, create ideal opportunities for our residents and this region. And third, it really helps both with our business attraction and services efforts, as we look to diversify the business types that are in Glendale. So, just by way of background, our efforts related to this initiative started back in 2015, when the City Council first authorized staff to engage with the consultant team. After a year of establishing parameters and defining the right scope for work, we initiated a request for proposal process, and in February 2016, 2016 is when the City Council authorized this contract with Estelano-Lasar Perez Advisors. And what they did is they helped us craft a strategy that helped us identify what the tech scene was in Glendale, developed strategies based on the subsectors that we have here, provided recommendations to the city on how best to promote and connect local entrepreneurs, and, again, outlined strategy that help us invest in the human capital that's here in Glendale. So, with this competitive bid, it was awarded to ELP. There were very specific reasons that the selection committee based their recommendation on, and if you recall, it really was their previous experience and expertise that demonstrated a track record that spoke to their delivery, to delivering a product that would be tailor-made to Glendale, and really delivering on something that could be implemented in the future. So, what were the recommendations? Those were presented to you on January 24 of this year, and in summary, we found that there are 1,000 firms in tech with more than 41,000 people employed in the high-tech sector. Within that very detailed study, and I do have copies for anybody here in the audience that doesn't have a copy, they identified 40 specific recommendations, and we've summarized them into these five key priority areas. So, with those priorities, number one being marketing Glendale as a place for tech. This includes attracting trade shows and conferences, creating a tech-focused advocacy organization, or really a working group. This working group would be led by the private market and would include members of the advisory group that has, at this point, helped us drive this study forward, and as well as other leaders in the tech industry that we've identified through the first Glendale Tech Week, as well as our Glendale Tech on Tap events. Second has been in promoting Glendale's a business-friendly environment. This includes things such as developing a more creative office space on brand, also creating a space for tech. This really discusses the physical space involved with this, maintaining our manufacturing space in Glendale, attracting medical users, and developing a tech accelerator program. Fourth is providing support to Glendale's tech workforce. This is the human investment part of what we do, working through the Verdugo Job Center, working with our schools and our students to engage them and create opportunities for that pipeline of talent. And then fifth is supporting the great quality of life that we have here in Glendale, and from a city, innovative practices that we can do related to transportation, or related to public space, like creation of a maker space in our newly renovated library. So, what was our assessment? Since hiring ELP, they have proven to be a very effective partner. They delivered this product on time and under budget. Through the development of this strategy, they've been instrumental in pairing us with organizations like BioCom, the Armenian Engineers and Scientists of America, as well as other top local firms like Age of Learning and Service Titan. And, again, this end product was presented and adopted to the City Council on January 24. So, since that adoption, what has been done? Well, we have been aggressively implementing the efforts that we can on the city side. So, a big part of this was taking out this plan to the community, and continuing to market our brand as tech. So, so far, we have presented this tech strategy to more than 15 community groups, everyone from the Glendale Chamber of Commerce, the Glendale Educational Foundation, Workforce Development Board, Tech on Tap, and many more. We've identified active leaders that could form the foundation of what this tech advocacy working group could be. We've created a marketing package related to our co-working spaces. We've also continued with Tech on Tap, and we now have a meetup group with over 658 members at this point. And we've also planned, started planning our second annual Glendale Tech Week for October 9. You'll see the mugs and the fancy pens in front of you. And then, lastly, we've embarked on a new business visitation program called GRET, or the Glendale Relationship Initiation Team. And I'll just briefly want to call your attention to GRET, because what it does is really epitomizes the kind of customer service that Glendale's known for. It's a very immediate and direct way to ensure business satisfaction in Glendale. So, the point with this business program would be to retain businesses, particularly those in tech. We'd provide local business owners with a sense of partnership with the city. We collect, connect local tech businesses with available resources within the city, and also with LA County, and hopefully as well, develop data that could shape future business-friendly policies. We will be launching this program in June, and we believe that businesses would really find it beneficial to get this one-on-one time with a coalition of business resources, as well as members of the City Council. So, next step, I've summarized what the city's staff has focused on, but there are some activities within that implementation strategy that ELP Advisors is well-suited to implement. These activities are really a natural progression of what the work that ELP has done, and we pared it down to what we see as the five bigger scopes of the bigger strategies laid out. One would be related to Tech Week advisement, really the nitty-gritty of attending meetings, making sure it's going well, but I think the bigger idea is to ensure that what we are doing with Glendale Tech Week is tying it into the bigger initiative of branding Glendale as a place for tech. The Tech Accelerator Development and Implementation Program, which, again, was a major implementation step that was described in the strategy, this would be something that we would look to ELP to ensure that we're taking it to the next level. Stakeholder outreach related to tech strategy, as well as the research and relationship building associated with the bioscience sector, which was a big part of our plan, and then, of course, protecting the manufacturing zones. We would look to them to discover and put together some best practices to make sure we're preserving those zones. So, in closing, over the past year, the staff has observed significant momentum related to the area of tech in Glendale. The proposed contract before you enables staff to continue to advance our tech attraction or retention efforts at a more rapid pace. So, as such, staff recommends approval of this contract, and the amount not to exceed $75,000. This concludes my report. We do have Cecilia Estelana with ELP Advisors to answer any specific questions related to the scope. In addition to our advisory chair, Councilmember Sinanian, Dr. Voden had submitted a letter. He really wanted to be here to lend his support to the project. Dr. Voden was also, as part of advisory. And Richard Ohanian, who is on our committee, he's with JPL and GCC, was rushing to get here, and I don't know if he's here yet, but he did want me to ensure that he showed his support. That concludes my report.
Thank you. I know this question, I'm sure I know the answer to it, but when you mentioned that you went to a lot of focus groups and groups, organizations in the community, what was their response to this program, forward-thinking as we are? Were they absolutely positively in favor of us moving forward?
All very positive, and if you, when you first see the strategy, it really, it really kind of was very big picture, and that was kind of the point. We were gathering data. And so, two of the facts that I said earlier, which was 1,000 firms and over 41,000 people employed by the sector, really is kind of the big takeaway that everyone, I think, is really excited about. And so, again, as we look to brand ourself on what tech means, everybody realizes they do have some connection to this industry. So, they have been very positive interactions.
And my second question is, and this is something that we spoke about this morning, and it's in our budget, and that's the innovative audit department that we're thinking about. I kind of see a correlation here, a collaboration possibility. Are you, is that something that's in the planning, or in the, kind of in your mindset?
Yes, Councilmember Devine, you are right. This is where kind of the ideal emerged. There really is, what we were trying to do is define the place for the city and the public sector when we look at innovation, and exactly like you said, that when you have an office of innovation, that's a very direct connection to that.
Great, thank you.
I have a question. Go ahead, Mr. Mr. This is on this little pamphlet. It says, "Background: In February 2016, City Council authorized the contract for $49,990 with the same company, ELP. What was different among that contract and this one?"
So, with that first contract, that was to write the actual implementation plan. So, the strategy in front of you, it was to do the data, put that actual plan together. Now that we have a plan with a set of recommendations, the city staff can certainly pursue what is laid out on those plans. There was 40 different, specific things we can do. This contract does the work. So, what we would do with ELP is they would actually implement those things that are described in the plan that they wrote. What we wanted to make sure is that we didn't have a firm come in here and just take over. We wanted them to really, at that first step, advise, advise us, advise the city on what the situation was. And I think at this step, now that we know what it is, we've looked at those priorities, we've gone out to the different community groups, and even they have advised the city, and this is what I believe is important. And based on those comments, we have put it down to what these, really those five bigger-picture strategies of what we do. So, these are the recommendations. Like I said, pretty big picture. These are really the things the city has done at this point. We've gone out, we've talked about it, we've done Glendale Tech on Tap, we've done Tech Week, we've created marketing programs. But this is what we need ELP for. We needed them to actually do that work associated with that plan.
So, after this contract is signed, do we need another contract?
That would be up to this council. I think what we do is we did a not-to-exceed amount, knowing that we're going to hit all of these, and the beauty with this plan is we can take it as far as we want, and at the farthest directions. For instance, I'll give you the development of the accelerator program. We have, we have a budget here that shows that the first year would be $40,000. And, again, depending on how aggressive you want to do that, depending on the success of what you want to do, you can take that further. You, as a council, can direct that the budget next year includes activities related to tech, or not. So, it really depends on what we want to do and how we establish those priorities. And really, that's where the importance of our tech advisory committee comes in. It's not city staff. It really is people, people from the tech industry, leaders in that industry, as well as community members, that are really advising on what those things should be.
Mr. Mayor, are you done?
Yeah. Councilmember Sinanian.
Yes. Darling, so, we have a contract in front of us, but it did not go through some kind of an RFP process, RFQ process. What's the reason for that?
So, when we first did the initial contract, we, it's interesting, one of the reasons they were picked is because we saw that if we wanted them to implement those steps, they could do it. It was one of the reasons, based on the makeup of their group, that we selected them. But we did want to take a pause, and that's why, like I said, it's really under two separate contracts. We are coming back and saying, ELP is in the best position. They have developed these relationships with the community groups. They know this plan. They know exactly what the city wants. They've now worked with us for a little over a year, and they really feel like an extension of that. So, you know, there is that option, but given now the work that ELP's done, and really the relationships they've created and maintained through this process, it is our recommendation to go with ELP for this.
And I agree with that recommendation wholeheartedly, and for the benefit of my colleague, Councilmember Agajanian, I'm going to give a little background on this. When initially we came up with this idea, I proposed the whole tech initiative, all it was, was a very general, amorphous sort of idea that we need to strengthen our tech sector, but first, we need to understand what that sector is, whether it exists, whether it's robust, whether it's weak, what its strengths are, what its weaknesses are. And we did go through an RFP process. There was an entity that came in front of us, which was utterly unprepared to carry through this contract, and therefore, you know, there was no way this council was going to approve it. Staff went back, came back with recommendation of another company, ELP, and they sounded like they really knew what they were doing. And that's despite the fact that we really weren't giving them much to work with, other than saying, "Listen, we have this idea. Run with it." Come back with a roadmap to the roadmap, and they did an outstanding job, outstanding job with, you know, relatively limited resources that was allocated to them. So, that's the background. They came back with, okay, well, this is what Glendale looks like in terms of its tech sector, and these are the directions in which we can move forward. That's pretty much, that kind of encapsulates it. And now, they're, you know, they're back, and they're going to take it to the next level. So, that's the background. That's why they're here. That's why we're looking at a second contract. Now, I want to sort of get into the nitty-gritty of that. You know, we have the amount of $75,000, and then we have these set goals that the contract is supposed to accomplish. But I'm trying to understand, do we have a rough idea of how, sort of what the breakdown is? If you could help us, please. Thanks, Cecilia.
Sure.
Councilmember.
What are we going to concentrate on, or where are the resources going to go most? Because things are very rough.
There's quite a bit.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, this is actually in order of importance, and kind of the way we'll march through it. Tech Week is coming up. It seems like it's a ways off. It's really not. I mean, it is around the corner, and the most immediate need, as I understand from Darlene and Jennifer and the team, is help them put together the program, and make sure that it's not just, again, a week, but it's something that fits into this overall scheme of Glendale as a tech hub. So, that's, as soon as, if we're lucky enough to get an approval today, we will hit the ground running with them on figuring out the programming, the partnerships to make that just really pop. Simultaneously, though, we know what we need to do on the accelerator development and implementation. We spent a lot of time talking with the council and others around this. So, that is research, getting out and talking to the field, understanding, and creating a very cost-effective strategy for Glendale. Do we use existing land that you already own? Do we enter into a relationship with, you know, a co-working space that may come to Glendale? That might be part of the deal. If the co-working space comes in, that they provide some space at a very low cost for our accelerator participants. So, we know that's kind of the next thing to do, but we can probably do it simultaneously with our work on the Tech Week advisement.
So, that sounds like that's more the development of the accelerator, more so than the implementation. Because I'm thinking implementation may take a little more money than...
It may, right? Remember, we kind of said, there was different versions that you could do, but we thought you could probably pull it off for about $40,000. We're not saying we're going to implement it, but we're going to put together the plan for you to get it done. We're going to really decide what, and maybe do an RFP and get it done, and also advise staff, because they have co-working spaces coming to them, really interested in Glendale. So, as you're talking to them, here are the things to ask for. So, it's kind of, again, more advisory services. And then, on the stakeholder outreach, that's kind of ongoing. There's a tech advisory group that's there. There's a program committee that has to go with Tech Week, and we'd be attending those meetings as needed and keeping that connective tissue. I have to say, your staff took this report and just ran with it. They have already moved farther faster than we could have imagined, and so it's about helping them have that additional resources in human body, boots on the ground, to take it to the next level. If you'll recall, we talked about the best way maybe would be for a nonprofit to be formed organically from some of our tech leaders here in Glendale. And so, we would really help pull them together, give them that extra oomph they need, to maybe form their 501(c)(3), help the city figure out how best to create the platform for them to get going. And then, on the bioscience and health sector, if you'll recall, of the 41,000 jobs, about half of them were in the health and bioscience sector. It's a very strong sector for you here in Glendale. We started to put together relationships with folks like USC, who are already invested in Glendale, may have an interest in creating more space in some of the opportunities you have here in Glendale. So, we would continue to develop those ideas. And then, lastly, if we still have money and time and space, and there's still an interest, we would be helping to staff to provide the best practices on how one would protect manufacturing zones. So, then, when you land a tech company, and they want to manufacture or do prototyping, they have a place to go. So, we have some thoughts. There are also some industry associations nationally that are doing work on this, that we'd like to introduce Glendale staff to, and maybe have Glendale be a part of that national network. So, that's how we imagine the work happening, but that's really in the order of priority and immediacy.
So, when we started speaking about this, you know, started the process rolling, I think one thing I said was that, you know, industries and companies come and go. They come to Glendale. We've watched this happen. The banks came, they left. The insurance came, insurance companies left. And it seems like we're not in control. We're always watching these things happen. And the idea behind the tech initiative was, well, how about we take control of an area of our economy, a sector of our economy that has a future, you know, it's sort of forward-thinking, and be in the driver's seat. And, of course, lo and behold, November of last year, one of our largest occupants in downtown Glendale, Nestle, just picked up and left. I mean, they just left. We just found out from the Wall Street Journal that they're leaving. So, again, just to reinforce how important this project is for us, and I have the utmost confidence in you and your company, and look forward to the results, and look forward to working with you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember.
So, Mr. Mayor, any more questions?
I have a couple of questions for you. First of all, I'll just add to what Councilmember Sinanian was saying about the first proposal that we, this council rejected. That was $75,000 versus what we had with you was $49,000, but don't add it to the second contract. But one question that I had when I was briefed on this, on this item, was the number of tech-related businesses in Glendale, which is like 1,100 or so. And I was told that an accounting company that is using a sophisticated software is considered a tech company, or high-tech company, or a real estate agency that uses a software that is related to high-tech softwares, and they're considered within that 1,100 businesses. Is there a way to, because when you tell me a high-tech company, I, what comes to my mind is Teledyne, or Oracle, or Silicon Valley-type businesses. Can we, within this next phase, figure out what is the companies that are really in tech business, and also, the manufacturing zone is very, is one of my, one of the issues that's really important to me, and how do we attract the businesses that they want to expand? There are in design-build companies that they design their product, but they also, they have like manufacturing component within their business. How do we attract them? That's one of the things that I'm very interested in to see. We can, we can protect our manufacturing zones, but if you cannot give them incentives to bring them to Glendale, then it just beats, you know, defeats the purpose. So, those are the comments that, you know, I would like to have some information.
Let me take the first one. Yeah, the first question, which is, how do you dig into what is really tech? And what, and that's what we did in our first report. So, we have a whole section on what is, how do you define technology? We used the L.A. Economic Development Council.
On page, are you on?
And that's on page eight. And so, we looked at different sectors, and we used, we didn't make it up, but we worked with L.A. Economic Development Corporation, using their categories. And then, we double-checked that with staff, and added any ones that we knew existed in Glendale that weren't quite covered. And so, you'll see the subsectors that we defined, and then we give you examples of Glendale companies that fit within it. And then, if you flip the page, you get into page nine. It gives you a breakdown of all of the subsectors that are within that, right, and the wages that are associated with it. So, this is just some of the summary data, but we provided to your staff essentially a spreadsheet, a database of all the tech companies, and you can sort it by subsector. You could sort it by geography. We mapped them all, and that is all data that's available to the staff to use in its marketing materials and its outreach materials. No doubt, with the GRET team, it's probably going to be looking at that data to identify the top 100. So, we can go pretty deep, and then we cut it by subsectors, and that's why we're able to tell you that health and bioscience is actually is a really strong subsector for you. So, for, these are summary tables, but there's lots of data. So, Mayor Garpetian, if you want to know more about any particular subsector, we can dig into that and do an analysis.
Right, because it says in here, architectural engineering and related services, or electric goods merchant wholesalers. Those are part of the, but it's fine. We'll look into it if...
And tech is a very broad category, so that's why we wanted to divide it up, so everybody knows exactly what we're talking about. And these are accepted categorizations that are done by industry clusters. So, it's, yeah. So, then, the second question you asked about, how do you, how do you kind of keep your manufacturing, preserve it, but then actually attract folks that are going to actually build here? Well, the good news is, the first thing is actually the preservation. If you send a strong message that you intend to have integrity about your manufacturing and industrial zoning, that's very important, because that land is getting gobbled up in city after city around L.A. County, and it's very hard to find good, quality manufacturing or industrial zoning property. There's also a need to invest in that area, to invest in some of the amenities that make sense, whether it's fiber, or even just the infrastructure around that area, and then marketing it, saying to folks, "This is the place for you to do rapid prototyping. This is the place." And the nice thing about what I think GRET is proposed to do is to actually come up with a very tailored message to the folks you're talking about, not just, "Hey, come to Glendale," but here's why we understand your business. We know that rapid prototyping for some of these uses need a manufacturing zoning. You can come to Glendale. You don't have to have any fears that we're going to rezone it and turn it into condos, right? That's an important message to give people the confidence in investing in your city for the long run. So, those types of strategies can make a big difference, and as we drill down, and the GRET team goes out and talks to that 100 top employers, they'll get a sense of their needs, and we can tailor our marketing and our incentive programs to meet their needs. The most important thing is to have that give-and-take with real companies, not just theory, but really boots-on-the-ground, talking to companies, and understanding their actual needs, and then tailoring your incentives accordingly, which you guys are really good at, actually, very, very responsive to your business needs. And now, you're just focusing on this particular subsector.
Okay. All right. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Question?
No, I don't have a question. I just want to say that your knowledge and your comfort with this, this whole program and plan, strategy, just kind of instills enthusiasm and confidence in me, and I don't know very much about tech, so I see no reason why, I'm going to support the contract. I think it would be great. Thank you, Councilmember. Thank you.
So, I have no, I have one card on this item, but Mr. Ohanian, Richard Ohanian? He's what? Where's Richard?
Well, I think he was outside, sir.
Okay. Well, I'll move the item if he's not here.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Agajanian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Sinanian?
Yes.
Mayor Garpetian?
Yes.
Next item, please?
Next item is the Director of Community Development regarding 145 North Louis Street. Stage 1 Design Review, Motion Approving Stage 1 Design.
So, we are going to present to you the Stage 1 of a rather interesting project that would take place near downtown on... would take place near downtown on property that is owned by the First Baptist Church. Council has historically seen these larger projects as stage one and two coming together. But at this point, at direction from the mayor, what we are doing is breaking these stages up into two different pieces and bringing to you first a very general, high-level review to ascertain council's comfort with the project. And then based on the relative comfort, or lack thereof, we would take that information and direction back and program that into the studies that would form the stage two consideration. So again, this one is rather high-level and still a little bit on the preliminary side, but the idea is to get those suggestions and comments from the council at the front end so that we are able to maximize the utility of both the council's time, as well as the applicants and the property owner. So with that, our senior planner, Mr. Kiesel, will give you an overview.
All right. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The applicant, R.D. Wilson, is requesting stage one design approval from the council for what is called now the Louis Street Hotel. It's located at 145 North Louis Street. The project site is on the corner of Wilson, southwest corner of Wilson Avenue and Louis Street. It's about 30,000 square feet in size, a little over. And the zoning of the project site is in the DSP, Maryland Arts and Entertainment District. This is actually sort of a big-picture overview of the neighborhood. The project site you can see in the center of the slide. And then to the west and the south is the five-star movie theater that just was recently vacated. East of the project site is the Glendale YMCA, and then north of the subject site is the First Baptist Church. And then sort of in the northeast direction becomes residential. You'll see some apartment buildings. All right. The project includes demolition of the existing surface parking lot, and then the construction of a six-story hotel with two subterranean levels of parking. There will be 147 guest rooms and 124 onsite parking spaces. There's actually the site plan. The main driveway is located off of Wilson.
Use the cursor.
Yeah, I saw it right there.
There's a mouse, Roger. Actually, you can use a mouse.
Oh, okay. Sorry. Oh, here it is. Okay. The main driveway entrance is right here, and this leads to the drop-off area, and then the ramp that goes to the subterranean parking. The service entrance is located in this area. This is an existing alley, and there's a service dock right in this area. And then along the southern portion of the property line, or of the property in this area, is proposed a pedestrian, a 20-foot-wide pedestrian passeo. The ground level, which is what you're seeing now, includes a lobby, which is this area. Small conference room here. Dining room and outdoor patio here. And then most of this is service, service areas. The second floor level will contain the pool and a fitness center and 27 of the guest rooms. And then the third through six levels contain each 30 guest rooms. As currently proposed, the project will require approval of several discretionary applications. And I'll just briefly describe them to you now. Hotel uses require one space per guest room. The applicant will be requesting a parking exception to provide 124 onsite parking spaces instead of the 147 that is required under our code. The second variance is hotel uses are eligible for incentives in the DSP. It's one of the incentive uses. With an incentive, the maximum FAR in this zone is three, 3.0. The applicant will be requesting a variance to allow an FAR of 3.4. And then finally, the DSP requires building walls framing passeos not to exceed, not to be more, I should say, than three times higher than the passeo width. So what that translates to in this case is the proposed passeo is 20 feet wide, and so the adjacent building wall of the hotel can't be more than 60 feet tall. It's a three-to-one ratio. The applicant will be requesting a variance to allow a 70-foot-high building wall. So stage one design really focuses on the site planning and the mass and scale of the project. Should council approve the stage one design at a later date, the applicant will be requesting adoption of the sequa action for the project, as well as approval of the two variances that I just went over, as well as a parking exception. And then finally, approval of the stage two design, which goes into more the design and detailing of the project. Just a quick overview, the east and north elevations, these are the two street elevations. So this top elevation here is the east. This will face Louis Street. The bottom is the And then the west and south elevations. The top elevation here will be the elevation facing the alley, as well as Bran Boulevard. And then the south elevation is the passeo So staff's recommendation is approval of the stage one design for the Louis Hotel with the considerations contained in the staff report. Now I'd like to turn over the presentation to the applicants, and they'll more thoroughly review the project.
Do you have any questions from Mr. Kiesel? Any questions?
So I have a quick question. If we're only considering stage one, so setting and scale, why did you mention the various discretionary actions that they're going to ask for? Just to put us on notice, or?
Right, right. Just to get you thinking about it, yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
That passeo, that belongs to the applicant, right?
Yes, it's property that the applicant owns, yes.
And it's 20 feet.
The width is proposed, it's just over 20 feet, yeah, 20 feet, seven inches, or something like that, yeah.
Just curious, since I don't know, could that be used, a portion of it, for parking?
It could. It would require redesign of what they have proposed now. I mean, that's why we're bringing to you today. If you all have site planning or mass and scale issues, that's certainly something you can discuss.
Because that is capable of having at least like, I don't know, like 10, 15, 20 parkings.
Right. There is, staff likes the idea because it connects the, sort of the newly-developed YMCA project with the sort of walkway within the movie theater complex.
Doesn't the code require that there be, the passeo has to look straight through to the main, to another street, from one street to another?
Right. When someone requires a passeo, there are certain requirements.
But I think in terms of parking, one of the questions policy-wise for the council is that if a exception is being requested, I think they're short 25 spaces to a 0.85 ratio versus 1.0. The question to the council is, given what you know about the use and demand for parking at hotels, truly does a hotel, a hotel in this location in the downtown, require the traditional one-space-per-room type of parking load, that parking requirement? I think from a staff perspective, we would tell you, as more and more people are Ubering and using Lyft and everything else, probably not. And if this is not public parking, then I think you have some latitude with respect to the parking requirement, perhaps even more so than the FAR or the height. So the, but the council gets to make that call. Council could say, nope, it's one space per room, and that's what we're going to live by. But again, I think that's part of the discussion here as a stage one design. You tell us now, because if council said you have to have one space per room, then they're going to have to redesign the building, which they would rather do now versus later.
That was the intention of having a stage one versus, stage one and stage two together, and let them go through the EIR or net deck and come back and say, well, no, we want one per room today. So I think this is a good place to discuss all the challenges that this project has, or are the variances they're asking for. And, Mr. Sinanian, to your question.
If I may, I'm sorry, I'm going to have to interject. I apologize. We just have to keep what's in front of us, what's before us, which is the design. If you have a concern about the design, about the layout of the site, and that's what Roger's talking about, I do have a little bit of concern of us talking about the variances because they're not before you. They require notice, they require a hearing. So I'd be a little, I'd be wary of giving clear direction on a variance that's not before you, because they're entitled to have that heard at a separate time. And so, and I do apologize. I thought that that was pretty clear at the outset. So I think really, it's a, what I heard was more of a site planning issue. Do you really need that passeo, or could it be used for other purposes? That's an appropriate question to ask. But I really would caution the council getting too far into the weeds on the issue of parking, because it's not before you.
Well, then I think this is not the right way of doing it, because if we do not give a green light today as to, we are okay with a passeo here to be 20 feet and the height of the building with what it is, and then make them go back and revise what, and come back with the same project, and we said now, today's, the variance is, what we're trying to, my understanding was to find out what the request will be for the second time, for the second stage two, and then give some direction as to, yes, we're comfortable with the height of the building as it is, part of the design, or the number of parkings, part of the design, or the FAR, which is part of the design, and move forward. If we don't give the applicants a clear direction today, not approve the variance, because it's not before us, but we need to give some sort of a direction as to if you're comfortable with 0.8.
Again, and my view is that we're here on design, which has to do with massing and scale the project, if you're okay with it. I think if you're telling the applicants that you're okay with the height, the numerical height, which requires, I guess it doesn't require a variance, but it requires the approval of the incentive, which comes when that second project comes back. I understand the chicken-and-egg problem you're faced with, but, you know, that there are steps to this process. We sort of, as a city, encouraged applicants to come for stage one to get comments on the design, which is massing and scale, and that sort of thing, but not on specifics. And if, you know, my only concern is that we're telling them we're okay with the parking, we're okay with the thing, that's problematic to me, because folks in the neighborhood are entitled to get notice about the project, about those specifics, about parking, about the incentive that you're going to grant, about the FAR variance that they need, those sorts of things. And so I am hesitant to have council members saying we're okay with those things when it's not before you.
But I think it does go back to Mr. Zagajanian's initial question about the passeo itself and the, whether or not it can be used as something. In terms of, you fill in the blank as, is it for parking, or is it for open space? And in this particular case, it's intended as that passeo. But I think to, you know, City Attorney's point, this is, at the end of the day, as Mr. Kiesel said, this is about massing and scale and design, the skin of the building.
I'm sorry.
If I can just add that, you know, I was having a problem with making a decision on this, because I felt that it was the cart before the horse. How can we approve a design when we, there are exceptions, there's a parking exception, a variance for height, there's a variance for floor area ratio? How can we okay this without first discussing or adjudicating these variances, whether we're going to approve them or not? Because it could change the mass and the scale of the building. And so I was having a real problem.
No, I appreciate that, of course. Just one, either one of your city attorney. So I cannot ask about passeo to turn it to parking, to see the feasibility of it's possible or not?
I think you can. That's certainly within her purview. I think what the follow-up discussion was about, are we okay with the amount of parking that's being provided? And that's what I'm saying, that's not before you. So if you think, and if you think that that's a question you want to ask, so that knowing later on down the road, they may not need the variance, or they may not, they need less of a variance, and that's okay. And because the passeo is a design feature, I think you're entitled as Design Review Board members on this to say, maybe we don't need it, maybe it could be provided for some other use. I'm okay with that. But I think to the extent that we're, the discussion point was, let's provide some direction on whether or not we're okay with the parking, that's where I have a concern, because I don't think that that, you can make that commitment at this meeting.
I mean, if there is issue of parking, like there is 147 units, and here is the city manager saying one room per one parking, this is the ordinance for the city of Glendale, and he's talking about that. So already we have a problem with the parking. So how I can approve it if I already see there is problem there? So I want to make it clear before I decide anything.
It's not being suggested that you prove anything today. The stage one design is not an approval really of anything. It's a conceptual approval or preliminary approval of the design. So you're saying, generally, I'm okay with what they propose. I'm okay with the architectural style, and generally, I'm okay with the massing and scale as it sits. But I hear you, and that's sort of the problem of bringing, and maybe we'll have to have that discussion about bringing conceptual approvals when they require other approvals by this council.
Let me ask you another question. If this doesn't come to council and goes to Design Review, what's the process? They get their variances approved first, then they go to Design Review?
I think they all come to council.
I think that's, that's.
They're all going to come to council.
No, no, I understand. Outside downtown. Any other project outside downtown, they get their variances first?
Correct.
Then they go to Design Review.
Correct.
The same process has to be before us.
But again, again, the only thing I'd point out, I'd make is, an applicant, whether it's inside the downtown or outside, can always ask for a preliminary review by either the Design Review Board or by this body, and that's what this applicant did at the suggestion of the city.
No, when you said the suggestion of the city, my understanding was this, all the issues will come forward, and then we're not approving a variance, but we are expressing our, you know, our concerns or support for, if I'm okay with 0.80, 0.8, and the applicant knows that I'm okay or I'm not okay with it, then when they go back to redesign this thing, they know what to redesign. Although, if you don't give clear direction, the design mass and scale is easy. You can always make changes, change your massing. But the variances are the challenges. If he can, I don't know, what are they going to redesign from here on, from this point on?
And, Mr. Mayor, members of council, my suggestion for you would be to take it off calendar and have them process the entire project upfront, because I hear what you're saying. But the parking exception and the FAR variance, those, you have to make those based on findings, based on evidence that's in the record before you to make those decisions, and it's not before you.
You know, my comment to Mr. Zagajanian with respect to the parking ratio is simply that in a, if the requirement is one car per room, I would encourage you to not be locked into simply that requirement in the context of looking at the overall design, because you'll have to weigh in whether or not you want the passeo, what the overall impact on the massing and scale may be, particularly if at some point, when it does come back, you don't necessarily need one car per room. So there is some flexibility, some fungibility between those requirements in this particular context. That's all I was trying to convey.
I'm, Kenny?
Go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry. So, and I totally understand the mayor's frustration, because I think his point was, which I
which I totally supported, was that when we bring these projects forward at stage one and two together jointly, at that point, the developer has gone through the terrible expense of basically building up this project to a point where they've spent a lot of money, they've, you know, most of the cases, they've done EIR, and it's, it kind of becomes, you know, unfair, almost unfair for council to turn them down, because, you know, they've already been dragged along through this process, and, you know, that does happen, they get turned down. And the point was, let's, let's create some, you know, like, segment the process and give them some certainty, or give them, give them some foresee, or predictability as to which way this is going, and that's not happening here.
Well, but I would say respectfully, sir, what you guys can do, what we would hope that you would do today, is say, as a use, what do you think of a hotel at this corner?
Okay.
What do you think of a six-story hotel at this corner? What do you think about the, the preliminary elevations that we've provided to you?
The only thing, I mean, the uses of-
Can we discuss use?
Well, the use is permitted.
Use is permitted, but, but to the extent that you were going to hear, based on the, the letters that I've received from a couple of residents, saying, don't put a hotel here. And, and you, I guess you could, you could substitute hotel with apartment building with some other structure. What type of improvement, given that this is today a surface parking lot, you, would you, would you like to entertain, how would you like to entertain that? Right? This is a six-story proposed building, does that fit your vision for this corner? I think we, and I certainly would expect that the, the applicant would wanna know, what do you think about that? And, and in deference to Mr. Sinanian's comment, I think they would wanna know that before getting to a stage two, with all of the environmental, with all of that money spent. This is your opportunity to say, it's too big, it's too small, we don't like, you know, fill in the blank. But you have at least a preliminary design to, to give some feedback, so it isn't just a shot in the dark.
Can I comment, Mr. Agajanian?
So let me, let me just get this clear. I can't say that I'm against the 3.4 FAR variance, but I can say that I don't like the massing.
That's correct.
But aren't those the same things?
No.
They're very close, they're related to each other.
Doesn't it add like 12,000 square feet? The increased FAR is gonna add about 12,000 square feet.
But here's the point, though, wouldn't the developer wanna know, at this point, that-
Sure he would, I would wanna know too.
But we can't, but you say it's improper to address that.
This is very strange. Well, I think the only strange part, respectfully, Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, is that we are trying to discuss design in a vacuum, with all the other entitlements. And, and I appreciate the frustration, and I apologize for it, but there's certain procedures we have to follow on the other stuff, and, and the land use case law is riddled with cases about pre-commitment before the appropriate time, and so I'm just trying to advise you not to step into that, step into that quagmire, by making just comments on things like parking, which requires an exception, specifically the height, you know, the massing, the scale, and even then, even if it was a code-compliant project, the council would be free to say, I still think it's too big for the neighborhood, it is not compatible, if, obviously, you have, there's some, some basis to do so, if you think the architecture's not right. Those are things within, in their purview at this stage.
Let me ask you this, let's go ahead. As a person who did design, I worked on a consulting engineering firm, I did design hotels and residential units, hospitals, I cannot imagine that if you are not saying to the engineer or consulting firms that what the parking will look like, where it's gonna be located, they can't go back and do anything. They may, they, maybe they have to reduce the number of the rooms. So that's why we have to give a clear direction as what they have to do. Otherwise, will be, the other way I'm looking at it will be, we just say, if there is, I like to have a hotel in that location. I mean, otherwise, it should be limited to that, that, okay, we want a hotel in that location, and then, on the next stage, I bring the same issues. But right now, this consulting engineering firm, or the builder, brought a floor plans, it says where the room is, how it's gonna be, the circulation is, and where the parking is, and how many parkings they have. It's gonna be very difficult for them to do anything unless you give clear direction. Otherwise, lots of things, entire building design should be changed.
Well, if I may, it, it seems like what, what's happening here is, we're being asked to approve a design, a hotel, that is unbuildable right now, because there are variances that need to be approved. Correct.
Again, it's not, it's not an approval, it's, it's-
Okay, let me, let me ask you this. If, if, I'm gonna bring, in a minute, bring one of the applicants and ask them which way they wanna go. They wanna go to the stage one, or they wanna go back and bring the entire package like they want on two, because the, my understanding from stage one was different than what I'm being, explained here today. So if they wanna go back and bring the entire package as a stage one and two, and say, okay, this is my hotel, this is the number of rooms, this is the number of parkings, these are the variances we are asking for, that's, that's the next step if they wanna do it that way. Because without, without variances, we cannot, we cannot design a project or do anything else. I mean, you need to know if you have, that's why, outside the DSP, we get the variances first, then they go to Design Review, you know, logically. I know they can go to Design Review any time, but they usually go, because when they go to Design Review, they, they ask them, do you have your variances or not? And if they don't have their variances, then it's a different-
And, and the resolution reads that it, the same is hereby approved as outlined.
Again, well, my, it's, it's a concept, so it's not, you're not approving the design. In fact, I, I would submit to you, Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, that what the code says on preliminary conceptual design is that even when you give that, that approval of the preliminary, nothing prohibits, nothing requires you to approve of stage two, nothing requires you, nothing prohibits you from imposing additional conditions, knowing that that design's going to change between stage one and stage two.
Okay. If I may, Mr. Mayor, two questions, Mr. City Attorney. Is there a, so what's the reasoning why buildings in, projects in DSP are treated differently in terms of not, not, not having to overcome the variances first before, before getting approval? What's the purpose, what's the purpose? What was the thinking?
I think just, I'd have to maybe turn to Jillian or Phil. Historically, when we had, when we had the redevelopment agency, sometimes projects would come, stage one, before they went through the environmental, because it is, and you've already, I think a couple of you already alluded to, it is costly to go through the environmental review, it is costly to go, you know, like, let's say, they've got a certain architectural style, maybe you wanna let them know that you're okay with that, that style, before they go through the entire process of, of doing a, a full stage two, or, or complete, or final Design Review. There's site planning issues, there's building mater, well, not building materials, but the, the, sort of the, you know, layout issues, and general massing versus the specifics related to the parking and the, and the height, and that sort of thing.
So was this, this process was adopted through an ordinance, or what is it that regulates this process?
It's in the code now.
So that code would have to be changed?
Correct, which part, to?
Well, the part where, you know, if, if a developer comes in the DSP with a project, they need to overcome their variances before they move forward.
That's, that's stage one and two together.
Again, they could have always, they could have done that, it was just, it was a choice, presumably by the applicant, to seek out preliminary comments on the design before starting the, the robust process of environmental review and, and the variances.
So, so the variances would involve the environmental process?
Yeah.
Overcoming the variances would-
The variances and, and the, all the other approvals require the CEPO to be done prior to.
Gotcha. And my second question is, if a project comes forth and, in downtown, DSP, a project like, for example, this project, except it's such where it is not seeking any variances, so what's the latitude that council has to approve, disapprove? I mean, what is it at that point, other than design, design and massing? What is it that we're, we're considering at that point?
At that point, it's Design Review.
Strictly Design Review, right?
It doesn't need any variance, but, you know, a lot of projects have both the Design Review component in the downtown, they might have the, one, one or more of the incentives that, that is part of that, goes together, but when there's no other variances or CUPs, it's just, it's really strictly-
Strictly Design Review. That's all I had, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. I'm gonna call the applicant, Mr. Tony Urzosek. I'm gonna try, I hope I did okay.
Tony Urzosek. Yeah, we'll just simplify it, thank you.
Okay. Yes, it's silent.
Good afternoon, council members. Well, we appreciate the opportunity to be here and present our project, and we can understand the dilemma of council at the moment regarding its process, being new to separating stage one and stage two. I did hear from Mr. Garcia mention the importance of preliminary feedback. If the council does choose to, for a combined stage one and stage two, obviously, that increases our risk in moving forward as is, without any modifications. We totally are on board to collaborate, in which we've already done with staff. Staff has been very productive and a valuable team member, and we'd like to continue this collaboration with the city. But that would require feedback, and we are always open to alternative ideas, suggestions, and many times, these improve the project for us in addition to the city. But again, the important aspect would be feedback, so that we can make time in between now and then productive.
Okay, so you like to go forward with the stage one, knowingly that the, the only comments that we're going to give you is, no, stage one today, that it's going to be more on mass and scale and, and the design, and as, and as, also, maybe some comments on the, the paseo or what have you?
Sure.
Is that okay?
That's fine.
Okay.
If he admits, if he permits it? I mean, otherwise, we're still running afoul of your-
No, I think, again, and I think the mayor succinctly summarized it, we're talking mass, scale, layout, site planning, but, you know, I, I, again, just cautioning the council not to speak to the parking, or to the, or the height variance.
But I bet he really wants to know if we're gonna, if we're inclined to give him the parking variance.
Let me, let me make one more comment about that. If we didn't have to speak about the parking and the variances, and, and the, what they need, the hurdles that they have to jump over, why is it in our staff report? If that wasn't, if you're not allowed to speak about it, why is it in our staff report?
I think, well, I think that the council probably needs to know whether or not, what the initial assessment is in terms of the needs of the project. This is a project profile, this is what's being proposed. I feel bad now, because I think it was my comment that started us down this, this road in, in addressing Mr. Agajanian. I would, Mr. City Attorney will stop me when he needs to, I would tell you that parking is less of an issue on this project as a downtown hotel.
Okay. Let's, then let's move forward. How many minutes are we going to give the gentleman? How many minutes, how many minutes do you need to present your-
Approximately 10 minutes, we'll have a presentation.
Okay, let's, we are-
But was that comment directed towards council, or to the applicant?
No, it was, it was an answer to the mayor's question as to why is parking referenced on, in this report? I think if I'm a councilman, if I'm a policymaker, I wanna know, well, okay, how many parking spaces are they proposing? Just for my own edification, is that meeting the code, or is that not meeting the code in, in general? And then, is that an issue? How they get there, whether or not you approve, whether or not you agree with staff, as you see from the discussion in the staff's report, staff has a considered opinion on the question of parking, but as City Attorney would tell you, that is a, a relevant decision for a later date, but as council thinks about this project, that may be in the back of your head. Is parking a central issue?
And, another question, so you're saying this massing is something we're allowed to vote on today, but you're saying not FAR, although I, I can't separate it, I'm, I'm having difficulty-
They are related, but I think design, you know-
I think what we-
So we're talking like a visual-
Yeah, the visual, I mean, that's what we're here for. It, it, how it relates to this context, how it relates to its neighborhood, those are the issues that are very-
Let me rephrase my, my, my comment. We are giving suggestions, basically, to, or conditions to what this council would like to say as far as mass and scale goes, for them to have an idea as to what they can do with this design, and, and bring it back as a stage two with all the variances that's required.
Yes, and, and I would, maybe to tie together your comment, Mr. Sinanian's comment, I'd encourage you to look at, at exhibit one in the staff report. This gives you at least a, a context in terms of the, the, the mass and scale of this project. Not necessarily FAR, because you don't know what's behind this facade in terms of the actual area of the building, but what you do get is an idea of how it maybe relates to the projects on the street, and if you know all four corners of that intersection, as described here in the subsequent exhibits in the staff report, that gives you an appreciation to say, wow, that thing does fit, or that thing does not fit, and by the way, here's a preliminary cut at the type of architecture that could be utilized on this project. That's rather unique from a lot of the contemporary architecture that you've seen in the downtown. I like that, I don't like that, I think Spanish Revival or this interpretation of it is, or is not appropriate. We think that there should be, Mr. Developer, more brick along the bottom, there should be a, a band of architectural materials. I think that type of feedback, that type of suggestion is going to help the applicant as they move forward in a stage two, presuming the council would let them go there.
Okay, next comment, sorry. One of the reasons I brought the parking issue up, because I received eight emails in opposition, and they all mentioned the parking matter, where one person only said that the quality is not good, it doesn't belong to this place, and it, I mean, it says, building does not, as the staff report claims, continue, in quote, I mean, continue the line of high-quality design being built, and, end of quote. They are complaining, just one person, the others, they are complaining about the parking issue, so it should be very important.
Mr. Agajanian, when, let me, let me just address that real quickly. When this meeting is over, they will receive all the, they will have all the, the copy of all the letters, and they will consider that in their stage two when they come back, how to address that parking issue. Whether it's, I don't know, a parking attendant, or valet parking, or what have, or use the paseo, they will address that issue when they come back on the second, second stage two. So, they will get all the inform, gather all the information tonight, and go back and-
To an engineer, you have to give direct, they have to have direction.
Fortunately, I'm not an engineer, so I-
So that's what I'm saying, they have the experience, because they have to know what they have to do, in my opinion, but anyway, maybe they know better.
If I may, I, I'd just really rather, instead of going, you know, into this today, I'd rather see us reschedule it as a stage one, stage two, do the variances, look at those, give you direction on the design, all at one time, so that you know exactly what this council wants. And I'd like to see that done in the evening, and I think we could all kind of work together at, you know, and, until then, we can look at this and study it and think about it, but that would be my suggestion at this point. I don't know if anyone else agrees with me, but that's my suggestion.
But we made them come to the stage one, and they are here, they, they have their plans done, we can, at least here, their, their, their case, and give them direction on the mass and scale and design, and they can come back with, on the second stage, with all the, all the documents and the, the variances and the EIR, or whatever they have to bring.
If that was a motion, Madam Councilmember, sorry.
Yeah, it's okay.
I think that is the best way to go, I would second that, both the content of the motion and the timing of it as well. And we can give them what we think, today, maybe have some parting comments to, to go on.
So basically, from here on, every design, every project that comes to downtown in DSP has to come in stage one and two. That's what we're saying.
Problem here is it's trapped in variances, that's the problem.
Show me one project that didn't use the incentives, most of them did, so-
Incentives are different than variances.
No, I understand, and many of them had variances. So what we're saying is, if the, a project has a variance, has to come before this council on stage one and two. Is that correct? Is that what you're saying?
I mean, in one second, you guys wanna solve all these problems?
No, no, I mean, that's, that's, that's a direction to, 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 to public, to, to all the-
Usually, they do come stage one, stage two, and this time, we're going stage one with three variances.
That's a new item that we need to agendize, if we're talking about changing the code, that's something that has to be put on the agenda to discuss. If you'd like to discuss that, I would second that, for a discussion as to how we will deal with these in the future. Just what you said, are we gonna make them come all together as stage one and stage two from now on?
If they want a variance, if they require a variance.
With variances, right. I mean, to avoid what we have here, they're ready to go, we wanna talk, we're prohibited- I mean, to avoid what we have here, they're ready to go, we want to talk, we're prohibited from getting into some of the real critical issues, and we're stuck, and we're fumbling.
I mean, if you're saying we are, we want to clear our process, right?
Well, for this.
Had to proceed.
Now, what we're saying is right now, because this project has, is requesting variances, the count, there's a motion and a second to bring this back in a stage one and stage two design, a complete packet, including the required variances with the EIR and negative declaration, whatever we have, a complete package. So that's what, it's on the.
Continue.
Continue to bring it as a stage one, stage two. And basically, the message that you're sending out right now, if you're requesting it, if you're going to request a variance, don't come at stage one, come at stage one and stage two. This is what we're saying today.
Those are your words, those aren't my words. But I'm going to support the mayor's, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
That's the motion, and that's the.
It'll take.
That's a decision.
I think the motion is related to this project, if I heard correctly, if it's a motion.
To continue the project and hear it at 6:00 PM, at the regular city council meeting.
With all the variances and the environmental review completed.
That was my second.
Sorry.
Did you move it?
No.
I'm just saying. Can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
Does that mean that we'll be stage one again, or it will be stage one and two together?
Together.
Together.
And that will be the process?
Yes.
From now on?
No, I think with process from now on, well, we probably should have a discussion about that later on.
This is a process specifically for this, for this project, that's what I'm hearing.
Every project's going to be different, I think, depending on what they're.
Why would it be different? If you have a variance, if you're requesting a variance.
Well, just depends, I do think, as some of you have already indicated, this project with the variances that they're asking for, I've heard a number of you say you think they are so interrelated with design that you can't make a decision on one without hearing the other. That might not be the case for every single project.
Can I still comment?
Go ahead.
Why we don't talk about the process before we get to this project, that how we have to proceed for the next and other projects, so how we're going to proceed, I think it would be better to discuss among ourselves before, to get this specific one, because we will decide something on this one, then next person will come and say, you decided this way, so let's make the process clear first, and then look at this project or other projects.
So because that's a broad and sweeping decision, we have to agendize that, and that's not on the agenda to discuss our change of our process today. All this before is this particular project.
Okay.
Am I right?
Yes, I mean, we could certainly would, I think, at a staff level, start to, if the council wanted to have the discussion later on, we could, but this is an applicant who will have an application, a series of applications that we have to, we have to proceed with in due course, we can't necessarily hold it up for broader policy discussions. But if we can have the discussion prior to, we'll do that.
There's a motion and a second, roll call, please.
Counselmember Agajanian, repeat the motion, please.
I'm sorry, sir, I think we are, we're having a, before that, I have to close the public hearing, so I apologize.
I think, from what I heard, the motion was to take this off calendar, bring it back in the evening meeting with all the discretionary entitlements it requires, including CEQA review. Is that correct, Councilmember Devine?
Correct. That is correct.
Would you like roll call, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
Councilmember Agajanian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Sinanian?
Yes.
Mayor Garpadian?
Yes.
What's next, please?
Motion to adjourn for this meeting. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Do we have closed session?
We have actually Housing Authority in meeting.
We adjourned with council.
Hey, I will call.